Just a reminder, everybody who's here, this meeting is being recorded and it will be posted on YouTube. Also, we have a sign up sheet in the back of the room if you want to participate in the public comment period at the end of the meeting. Please feel free to sign in so that we can call names in an orderly fashion. Before we get started, I want to announce that we had an executive session tonight regarding the conditional use decision for the YMCA. And the first thing I will ask for now is a motion to approve the minutes of the May 8, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
A second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Onto the reports. First up, we have Police Chief Scott Alexander. Wait, where is he? Oh, right there.
Thank you and good evening. For the month of May, 2023, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented 1,138 entries in the Police Department Call Reporting System. During the reporting period, the officers issued 135 traffic citations. We investigated 25 motor vehicle crashes and they arrested 10 individuals. Additionally, for the month of May, the department members conducted five motor carrier details at the waystation resulting in 1,424 commercial motor vehicles being weighed, six of which were found to be overweight. During the details, the officers also performed 77 motor carrier inspections requiring 20 vehicles and one driver to be placed out of service. The officers were assisted by members of the Pennsylvania State Police on two of those details. Sergeant McBride conducted an additional seven commercial motor vehicle inspections during his normal workdays, resulting in one vehicle and one driver being placed out of service. Year to date, the officers have documented 5,781 calls in the call reporting system. They've arrested 63 individuals. They've issued 679 traffic citations, 172 written warnings. They've investigated 134 motor vehicle crashes and they've weighed 3,093 commercial motor vehicles. Additionally, for the month of May, there were no Narcan administrations.
Great. Thank you. Next up, Treasurer.
Good evening. Through the month of May, in the general fund, we have collected just under 49% of our budgeted revenues and have spent just under 41% of our budgeted expenditures.
Okay, thank you. Public Works. Katie?
Hi. The daily average flow to the downtown treatment plant was 1.5 million gallons per day. There were no new connections to Dara or Eagleview. Euclid Township received .09 inches of rain. Normal for May is 4.4. Normal for year to date is 18.3. Year to date total for Euclid Township is 11.07 inches. So right now, we are minus 7.23 inches for rain in Euclid.
I know, we know it, right? Everyone's trying to water their garden. Okay.
Okay, then for Public Works. For the month of May, the Public Works Department did stormwater management work. They replaced the storm grate on Wellshares Way. They installed a three inch connection for the homeowner on Sean Drive. They finished pipe work on Wellshares Way, cleaned and repaired 58 catch basins in Wellshares, finished replacement of C-tops on catch basins in Wellshares, replaced three walls in a catch basin on Victoria Court, cleaned out the drainage swell on South Village between Glendale and Broad Meadow, repaired a sinkhole in Shell Meyer. And for the road maintenance work, they did some repairs on Eagleview. They broke up and hauled concrete spoil from the pickleball court to the Cedar Hollow Recycling, followed excess soil from the pickleball court, unloaded and set the swing set at the pickleball court. Picked up flagstone at South Village Avenue for the Township rain garden. They did some sign repairs on Woodland, South Village, Jones Pond, and the Foxcroft Development. And also, they did their state inspections of trucks, trailers, as well as regular maintenance.
Thank you. Fire Marshal?
Yes, thank you. For the month of May, the Building Department issued 93 permits for construction activities. Total of 126 inspections were conducted. Total of nine fire code inspections were conducted. Forty-five use and occupancy certificates were issued. And the Fire Marshal responded to 14 incidents as well as one burning complaint for the month.
Great, thank you. And the Lionville Fire Company?
Your word. For the month of May, the Fire Department responded to 52 incidents. Of those incidents, 27 in Euclid, four in Upper Euclid, six in West Pikeville, and 15 in other townships. And to date, our year-to-date total date is 251 incidents.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have someone from the Euclid ambulance? Not tonight. Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the reports as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to business, our first item of business tonight is the Heart of Euclid presentation. Ms. Obensky had a few words to say before we got started on the presentation.
So in honor of Euclid Township Native Plant Week, which is taking place this week and was established by resolution a few years ago by this board, I am very excited to have Tony Gorkin, our Master Naturalist and Superwoman of Euclid Township, do some acknowledgement of our volunteers that have done a lot of the maintenance installation, planning, education regarding our native planting initiatives in the township. And before Tony gets started, I just have to take a moment and talk about Tony for a few minutes. Because Tony is Tony is everything in Euclid Township when it comes to the work that's done and the volunteer family that I see sitting in front of me right here. Several years ago, when we were working on our Euclid Township Comprehensive Plan, we had a few segments where we talked about what place means and what our community looks like and what people identify as the center of Euclid Township or the heart of Euclid Township. And we did a public survey and we got a lot of responses. And they were really interesting. Some people said, you know, the center of Euclid Township is Route 10113. Some people said it's Eagleview. Some people said it's this township building. Some people said it's Doug Hanley. And it prompted some really good conversations about what we want to establish in our community and how people feel sense of connection and a sense of place to the community that we all share. And Tony was in those meetings. Tony is in many of our meetings. And as I was kind of thinking what I wanted to say about Tony tonight, it really just occurred to me that Tony has really become a Heart of Euclid for us. She has established our Heart of Euclid garden bed, which is right out front. Everybody walks by on their way into the meeting room. But the family of volunteers that she has grown and that she has nurtured throughout the last few years in her service on the Environmental Advisory Council is really what the Heart of Euclid is about to me and to the people that I have met as a volunteer with that group. These guys are out here when it is 105 degrees watering milkweed, hauling jugs of water from all around the building. If you have milkweed growing in your yard that you took from a township event, it was at one point on Tony's deck. It probably passed through her hands or the hands of someone that's sitting in the front row here. And because of her work, we have native plants that are in many of our public school grounds, many private neighborhoods, many private yards, many of our parks. And every year, we have more milkweed than we know what to do with. And some of it is sitting outside today in pots for you guys to take and put a piece of Heart of Euclid at your home, too. So I'm going to turn it over to Tony. But first, like I said, I just wanted to thank Tony for everything that she has given. She'll probably talk a little bit about the amount of time that has gone into her work here. It's astronomical and I think that we all just should acknowledge her efforts, her time, and what she has done to really make Heart of Euclid here.
All right, Tony.
You can take that off of there, Tony. Oh, boy.
Take it. My very pleased staff. This is our fourth spring with milkweed garden. We also have a tree support garden and a weather garden. And it's the third of those as well. So this recognition of our experience is all overdue. These volunteers create and maintain the gardens. They introduce native plants to support the desire of pollinators. They expanded by reverse compared part culture. They add to the enjoyment of township residents visiting the park. And more importantly, their efforts have helped educate the public in sustainable farming practices that we could all use in our personal lives and go through the environment and children. These volunteers all in all were worked in mass to, I think, spreadsheet that's in the main sub years. That's a lot of hours stacked up. It typically happens in two hour increments, so we do that keep on planning the organization. I also want to thank the support and assistance the township grounds, native support organization, including groups and charities and pile county G. They've supported us help the South. And I'm quite interested in what we're doing with the rest of the council and township. Movement is growing. Our efforts, we expanded, we reached out, we should pollinate the garden in our neighborhood community. These volunteers have collaborated, they share their plans with both the environmental advisory councils, other environmental organizations, projects, we're moving, planning, and life. And generally, it's better than for our luxury area. A bigger background, the park you can park it, it's often provided, that's the best estimate that it was training. And a part of all of that training is to reach the public. Actually, originally, it was so I've already become a better manager. It's mainly to learn how to engage the public in a stronger, more dedicated, interactive way. Several of the volunteers are certified PA master masticists, lower acid water shed stewards, and they share their expertise, boss followers, Google, and these know whatever. The touch cards are rolling something else, oh, who burned that in the park? There's a sign out there. Listen to the nature instead of launch by our own town name. With the fact that we will include native plants in our local parties, we could add up to national or true that all the other national parts combined. Usually, it could have been a true environment. So I have certificates and small films came out to the people who are here today. I'd like to ask you to join me when we drop these volunteers for their contribution. And these that are joining us we have a big swell of volunteers. And also, yes, there are supplements out there. So I'm going to call a few people, everybody, so they're not here. But I have a token of let's have it. This is welcome to the the power of the with him. So, well, that's Jack Vickery was a volunteer very well. She's wouldn't play, but she made a major contribution. Happy Tracy? It's also been working on this and this really major course, we can use a broad on this town. And we have a Laura. Laura Obensky? So that we're tied. Martin Barrows. And Caitlin Miller, our case of track of us who will watch out majoring. And Soma Patterson, who is of So I also have certificates, I'm on Bruce and the tie up my but they really help. So this is, this is a organization I'm very proud to be up here. And I, you are fishing on the river. And then you will carry this chance, you're a logic.
Yeah, can we take a picture for social media and maybe we'll get more volunteers?
We just want to line up over here. Right there.
And that
Yeah. Here, I forget your
Stand in the back. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you very much, all of the volunteers. And we love the gardens here in township and we encourage everybody to grab a plant, whatever's left, and water it when you take it home.
The plants in the pots, not in the ground.
Yeah, the plants in the pots, yeah. Okay. So, next item on the agenda is the YMCA Conditional Use Decision Response Update. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Freed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as folks may recall, on May 8th, the Board issued a decision approving a conditional use application from the YMCA for a multipurpose area with a number of conditions, including a lot of work they needed to do to mitigate sound associated with pickleball. The Board, the Board, the YMCA has advised the Board by, both on May 18th and then again by a letter on May 24th, that they are not agreeable to the conditions that were stated in the decision, which means that the decision is considered a denial. We, they did, in their May 24th letter that they provided, they did indicate that they are willing to adjust the plan for the facility so that it will no longer include any component of outdoor pickleball use in the proposed multi-use area. But they're not really sure on what mechanism to do that other than, and I think that the two potential mechanisms are either filing an appeal and trying to resolve it or reapply. I do expect that we'll see an appeal from the YMCA. And we'll see where it goes from there.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Freed, for the update. The next item of business, we have some items to advertise. We need to get permission. So the first one is the green light, go round six.
Yeah.
Katie?
Yep. So this is for Signal.
I'm sorry, one second. Okay. Is there any, are there any comments or questions about the YMCA Conditional Use Response Update? Sure. Come on up to the microphone and just let us know your name, please.
Benjamin Joseph. And I was here at the May 8th meeting and I didn't get a chance, but I did want to thank the Board of Supervisors for their comments regarding the pool at the YMCA. You indicated that you do not support the removal of the pool and I'm glad for that. I think that a lot of township residents feel the same way. You know, I don't understand the plan to remove the pool and replace with pickleball. And I certainly don't understand the plan to fill in the pool and replace it with a basketball court. We learned that a basketball court was previously at the YMCA and removed for disuse. I really think that the YMCA hasn't given adequate consideration to the township and its previous support of the YMCA. The township funded both the outdoor pool and the indoor pool. We heard that township residents have participated in the YMCA's expansion plans, which included at one point a plans for a 50 meter pool and an indoor/outdoor pool. And of course, now the plan is for no outdoor pool at all. You know, this is the only outdoor pool and the only children's pool at Lionville and it serves as a community pool for Euclid Township. And it's a valuable asset to children and to young families. And that's why I don't support its removal. I'm afraid that this is part of a regional strategy for the YMCA whereby valuable assets are being moved out of the Lionville branch and valuable programming as well. And that includes the aquatics program. I don't know if you're aware of this, but at the Lionville YMCA, they recently moved their aquatics director out of the Lionville YMCA. And following her was a large portion of the aquatic staff to the point where recently, the YMCA hasn't been able to keep the indoor pool open. So I really just think this is a bad plan for Euclid Township residents. I think the only thing that it might achieve is a minimal cost savings for the YMCA. We're talking on the order of a quarter of percent of its operating expenses for our 2022. And it's going to be at the expense of township residents who are being asked to just commute to the other pools in the association, which will give considerable commuting expense to township residents. So once again, it looks like my time is up from the look of it. So, but once again, I want to thank you for your comments at the last meeting and also for the conditions that you set. And I hope this can be resolved favorably. Maybe even you'd be willing to raise this issue with the YMCA or even consider offering future funding for the outdoor pool. As you know, it was funded originally by the township and the costs associated with preparing the pool are going to be much less than building a new community pool. We're talking about 10 times less. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, yeah, we do have a three minute time limit for everybody that wants to speak, just so that we can make sure everybody has a chance to speak. So, but thank you. Are there any more comments or questions about the YMCA Conditional Use Update?
Hi, I'm Carol Hanson. I'm here basically to support Lionville Station Farm use. But I have to respond to Ben. Where'd you go, Ben? Ben. Carol Hanson, I've been on the board of the Lionville Y for past probably eight years. As many of you know, we went through an extremely difficult time with COVID. It was fortunate that all the Ys had to close. They had to furlough the majority of their staff. It was an extremely challenging time. And right now, I think 70% of the members have returned to the Y. But bottom line, financially, it's been a real struggle, as all of us are aware of, with membership organizations like the Y that does such a fantastic job of providing programs for children and families. They moved, they did move the team to another Y primarily because they cannot find swim coaches to teach the kids or to run the swim teams. So what they did is they coordinated it. So one Y will be running both swim teams, but the meets will still occur at the Lionville Y. So if we had another 300,000 in capital expenditures, we could correct all the issues that need to be corrected long-term capital expenditures for the Y. And then it's approximately another $65,000 to $70,000 to open a Y pool for the year. It's only open for two and a half months. And obviously, the two and a half months where people paid for the Y and there was some of their membership costs as well, did not cover the cost to support the Y. So other income had to support those costs, number one. And number two, the Y is still struggling to come back from the issues that we all suffered from COVID. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the YMCA Conditional Use Decision? No, I'm sorry, there's someone else that wants to speak. Or not.
Michael Taylor, Creekside Drive. I'm glad to, I'm here speaking about the funding for the YMCA pool. I was not able to listen to what the decision was in May because I was stuck outside because we had so many people here. So, but I'm glad to hear that it was acknowledged that the township had funded that. I want to make, but what I would like to know is what is the township doing to get the $500,000 back from us? Back to us? Because when that half a million dollars was put into that pool area, it was done with the express understanding and agreement that it was going to be the community pool for our area. We paid for that pool. That's our money. We built it. If they're going to close it and they may have their financial problems, we should get that money back. We paid for it. That's our pool, not their pool. So if they're going to not, if they're not going to hole up their end of the bargain, we should have our money back. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as the money that was given to the YMCA to help build the pool, that was before our time, obviously, but we did get our money back by way of free
Memberships.
Memberships.
All of the residents in the municipality for the first couple of years that it was open.
Did everybody hear that? And, okay, so anyway. Are there any other comments or questions about YMCA Conditional Use Decision? Do you have a quick? Oh, maybe you guys can talk about it afterwards because this really isn't about the pool. This is just about the conditional use decision. Okay. So, moving on, then permission to advertise, we have the green light, go round six.
Yeah, so this is signal improvements to Route 113 and also Route 100. So right now, we're just asking for permission to advertise for that.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Moved.
A second.
Someone going to make the motion? Motion to advertise? I didn't say anything. All right. So there's a motion to advertise the green light, go round six. Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor? Aye. Next up, Ramona?
Yes, so we received a zoning change request for the property at 339 West Euclid Avenue. This plan will be on the Planning Commission agenda in July. And we're looking for permission to advertise the hearing in front of the Board for July 10th.
Okay. Can I get a motion to grant? Okay. Can I get a motion to per- grant permission to advertise for a zoning change request for Ramona 339 West Euclid Avenue?
Second?
Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor? Aye. Uh, lastly, the Calvary Chapel of Chester Springs.
Uh, yes, this is another zoning change request that we received. Similarly, they would be on the agenda for the planning commission um, in July with a hearing in front of you, July 10th.
Okay. So can I get a motion to grant permission to advertise for Ca- Calvary Chapel of Chester Springs zoning change request? Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the public? If you could just come up and say your name. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Where do those advertisements?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
John Corl. Where are the advertisements placed?
Daily Local.
In the Daily Local and they're also?
They're also going to be posted on our website and outside.
Yeah. Okay. On the board outside. And, okay, uh, any other comments or questions about that? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to the fourth item of business, we have an, where's our court reporter? Really? Oh, she's not feeling well?
Yeah, and we can still proceed.
Okay. All right, I'll hand it over to you then, Mark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight we have a posed ordinance um, for um, the Euclid Township to add chapter 195 hotels, motels, inns and property maintenance regulations. Um, this is um, an ordinance that was prompted by a number of violations and nuisances that have occurred in the township. Um, and it's, it calls for an, an annual licensing uh, as well as rules and regulations uh, for the operation of the hotels, calls for uh, periodic inspections and um, a number of other items um, related to the operation of the hotels, including fire inspections and, and the like. I do have a number of exhibits um, for the hearing. Board exhibit one is the proposed hotels, motels and inns property maintenance regulations ordinance itself. Board exhibit two is the public notice. Board exhibit three, and this goes to question about advertising, the board exhibit three is the proof of advertisement in the Daily Local uh, on May 31st, uh, 2023, and board exhibit four is the certification of posting uh, at the township uh, dated May 22nd, uh, 2023. So it has been duly advertised. Um, I will note that this was, that had come before the board. Previously, we did receive a number of of comments um, from folks that were frankly very helpful. Very uh, very good comments. We even got, we got comments on this version too, and I know some councils here, very able council gave very thoughtful and, and good comments. Um, I believe uh, frankly, based on some of the comments we received previously, it's a better ordinance today than it was two months ago. And so I think the board can proceed if it, if it so wishes. Could make a motion to-
To grant or to adopt the ordinance?
If, if you, if you're so inclined.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to adopt the uh, ordinance 2023 dash O three for the hotels, motels and inns maintenance regulations.
A second?
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Few comments.
All right, go for it.
Looking right at it. Um, I just wanted to echo Mr. Freed's comments. I believe that this ordinance, which has been in the works for about a year, um, has undergone a variety of revisions and received input from both the hotel industry as well as our first responders and community members. Um, I believe it encompasses a variety of common sense expectations that all of us would have when staying in a hotel. Um, and we'll do a lot to work towards um, the safety of the guests in hotels, safety of township residents and the safety of our first responders that are tasked with um, addressing issues that pop up from time to time. Um, and I just want to thank the staff and everyone that provided their feedback. This has been a bit of a labor of love and I truly believe that it's going to um, make our large hotel community here in Euclid Township um, a safer and uh, better destination for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Nope. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Nope. Oh, sorry. Never mind.
Sally Herwig, I am representing the Exton Hotel and Conference Center, and there were just a few after the revisions, I know. Um, there were just a few points-
Oh, yeah, I, I actually, I'm glad you reminded me. There was as part of the, well, you'll probably address it, but as part of um, public comment, I was requested by uh, attorney uh, Brendan Hennessy, who is representing the Exton Hotel and Conference Center. Uh, he had provided comments on June 2nd, 2023 uh, by letter that they be included as part of the record in the hearing. So-
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder.
Um, I believe um, our main concern as well as the other surrounding hotels is the length of stay. Um, the 30-day length of stay that uh, is mentioned in the ordinance. Over the years, we've had many due to natural disasters or uh, we've had lots of families that we've had to shelter um, that still are having problems finding homes the county takes care of them, and we're working with the county, you know, to make sure that families have a place to be as well as veterans. We, I know that there's a shortage of rooms at the VA Hospital in Hootsville, so we're in collaboration with them as well to uh, house some of the veterans. So that was, there was uh, part of the ordinance that after 30 days, they would have to have permission to stay. That's the one touching we had, whether that could be something that could be looked at. Um, the other is the renewal process. It was kind of unclear whether um, the property has a violation. We have a 30-day renewal. The property has a violation. Will that uh, contract be extended until the violation is, or is it just after 30 days? The way it's written in here, it's kind of like um, you have a violation. If you don't get that corrected within the 30 days, there could be a suspension of the application.
It would have to be act-
Kind of very unclear the way it was written, but we just wanted to be um, we wondered what, you know, we assume the license will still be in effect even though the working on the violation for the three days. Does that make no sense?
We can, I mean, we could take a look at that.
Okay. And um, we do appreciate, you know, all the, the revisions that have been made so far, and we do want to work with the township. We just had those few questions.
So on the, on the 30-day stay, there is a provision that provides for for good cause shown, that they can be extended beyond 30 days. So there is some, and that was based on some prior comments we received.
Okay.
There is some wiggle room in, in the ordinance current.
And then I don't have to go and get, it's kind of stated that they need permission to, to-
Well, they do good, good, so you would come to the township and say, look, we have a situation where we've got veterans, we've got people, whatever, you know, and, and we think it's justified in this situation, and the township does have the authority under the, under the ordinance to grant an extension on that.
Okay, that's what we're really concerned about. There's the families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions about the hotels, motels and inns ordinance?
From the same hotel, but I have um, because I work with the I was when they came to inspection, so I have a quick question. In a, in an ordinance, it said uh, procedure for suspension revocation. Now, we have to go uh, when, if it's suspension uh, for the license, then we have to have a hearing notice before 30 days. But uh, we strongly believe that application or license should have uh, opportunity to engage with the discussion with the township officials regarding any suspensions before for, going for the hearing. And that give us a chance to resolve anything we missed or so we hope we can get that chance. Actually, that's one point I want to give it. And more clearly, like a license renewal process. So usually you said 30 days, uh, we have to renew the license. At the same time, we have to request the license inspection, 30 days period, actually. So my little concern, like in case if ins- uh, inspection happen after 15 days, do we get still 30 days or more? And the, another question is like, um, let's say 30 days period end, so the license is going invalid. So let's say we have a deficiency, sometime the vendors will say, hey, I have parts going to be laid and I have a labor problem, so I need couple of times to fix this. Seeing that uh, you know, un- unfortunate things which is will be on our hand, do we get extra time till our license still valid?
Yeah, so I, I think probably because you're talking about some very specific
Yeah.
situations, it may make sense. I mean, the comments are good and I'm glad that we're, we're getting them for the record. Um, it may make sense for us, for me to talk to your council or for, you know, you to talk to the zoning folks um, or with your council's permission and, and, you know, we can talk um, and go through some of your specific questions.
Uh, that's mostly all actually I have.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Then I'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to the announcements. All meetings will be at the township building unless otherwise noted. Wednesdays here, 9:30 AM, yoga in the park right here behind the meeting room. That's every Wednesday all summer. June 7th, the planning commission meeting is canceled this week. June 7th, the special joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation and Advisory Environmental Advisory Council will meet here at 7:00 PM to talk about Jones Pond. On June 8th, the historical commission will meet at 7:30 PM at the Cadwallader House. On June 13th, the community day committee will meet here at 7:00 PM. June 15th, the environmental advisory council works, will have their workshop meeting here at 7:00 PM. On June 19th is the Juneteenth holiday and township offices will be closed that day. June 21st, the zoning hearing board will meet at 7:00 PM to discuss the rear yard variance for 215 Landoverry Drive. On July 5th, the planning commission meeting will be held here at 7:30 PM. And July 10th is the next board of supervisors meeting here at 7:30 PM. Now I'm going to open up the meeting to public comments. Oh, here's the list. So I'm going to go ahead and call people up by name, hopefully if I can read the handwriting. Dang it. Uh, Katrina? Dyson? Lyson? Waisaki? Okay.
Hi, Katrina Waisaki, live at 410 Byers Road. Um, obviously, I'm, I've come a couple of times speaking about uh, this save Lionville Station Farm. I basically just wanted to speak on and in case anybody missed it, um, on the 16th of May, there was a tractor trailer that actually came off of the turnpike, crossed over Hayward and came within 50 yards of someone's house. Um, many of us may not have seen that because it's on a crossover with, it's on Township Line Road. So that's uh, one of the hugest concerns that the majority of us have voiced about this warehouse thing. Thank you, sir. You can't control 18-wheelers. I mean, and that poor family had that 18-wheeler lost control 50 yards ahead, their home would have been destroyed and their children may have been killed because it, I passed by on my way to work dropping, dropping my children off to daycare. It was at eight o'clock in the morning. So, and I know their children are small. Um, and as a mother of small children, that just, it terrifies me. Um, as a person who has lived in this township my entire life, it angers me. And the fact that we're even considering this and putting so many people's lives in danger because of such things, uh, environmental hazards, we're, we're even entertaining these thoughts. It's just, that's why we're all here every single month and will continue to be until somebody says, all right, give up because we're not going away. Um, but I just want to let everybody else know, in case they did not know, that did happen and it's a reality. And especially because of the way that our roads are back there. It's 18-wheelers. It's, it's not a good place for it. It's not going to fly.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Toby Chadsey. I'm going to go ahead and read the next couple of names, just so people can get ready. Frank Agito and then uh, Benjamin Joseph. Oh, you already spoke? Okay, I'm crossing you off. Then Lynn May. So Frank Agito and Lynn May, after Toby.
Hi there. I'm Toby Chadsey. I live at 615 Byers Road. I spoke at the last meeting. Anyway, um, I'd like to just have a minute here about noise or ordinance, your, your zoning ordinances, et cetera. And I happened to look up through your, your statutes today and the noise ordinance. And basically it says this ordinance is intended to protect the physical, mental, social well-being of the residents of Euclid Township. And basically, this development would break all, all the rules here in, in, I mean, it will, including uh, no noise between 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM. So how do we get around that? This is a 24-hour-a-day, 365-day-a-year operation that's, you know, I heard the developer at one of your earlier meetings that I saw on the, the video, say, well, we're going to plant some trees and some berms, put some berms, plant some trees. Uh, our house is probably a half a mile from the freeway interchange. And on some nights with our bedroom window open, it sounds like we're camping out at the toll booth. So there's lots of berms and trees in the half mile between us. That, that, that's not quieting anything. And, you know, one of the ordinances that they are, one of massive variants would be uh, the square footage of the building. They're asking for a 2,850, 2,850% increase in the building size. So to allow this to happen and, and give, you know, variances of, of that epic magnitude basically makes the whole ordinance system and laws just a joke. It really does. I mean, it's, it's everybody else, you know, you want an extra parking space or something, okay. But we want a building that's, you know, 2,850% larger, taller, you know, it's, it's just the laws are there. Your ordinances are there. Please enforce them. And this, this, this won't even be happening if the current laws have to be changed.
Um, I, I just want to reiterate that this is, there's nothing being granted right now. This is a, it's a sketch plan, so it's,
I know.
It's very early on. And I also want to say that we take our decisions very seriously. Uh, our, we don't believe our ordinances are a joke and I'm, we all um, think very carefully before making any decision, so I just wanted to put that out.
Yeah, no, thank you for your, thank you. Uh, but this developer who's deep-pocketed and probably has Amazon behind them, I don't know who the client is, but it's probably Amazon or Walmart, somebody with really deep pockets. And they're not going down this road because they think it's not going to fly. They're going down this road because they got the one on the other side approved and let's try for this side. And it's noted all over the United States that one- And it's noted all over the United States that once there's one, one gets through. The cat's out of the bag. And we just need to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Frank Agito.
Frank Agito from Hawthorne Street. Thank you for listening. I've been a resident for fourteen years and I'm here about noise concerns from coming from pickleball courts at the Penny Packer, right? Uh, establishment, the swim and tennis club. Um, I could tell you that it is extremely loud, annoying and distressing noises that occur all day. Some neighbors and I, we tolerated it somehow last summer into the fall. Uh, it went on till uh, early November, but this year I I'm just not ready to 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 tolerate it again. Uh, so I'm asking politely for your enforcement of the noise ordinances. Um, folks that had been concerned about the the YMCA pickleball courts have every, they're very have every right to to be kept concerned. It's it's kind of like a sound that sounds like even though it's a few hundred feet away, it sounds like somebody is hitting a pipe with a hammer. It sounds like it's ten feet from you. Um, I can hear it in my house. If I have my windows open, I can actually hear it in the basement with, even though I don't have windows open in the basement. So it's just it's and it's just unacceptable. So just wanted to bring it to your attention. Uh, so I was wondering, you know, what what can you tell me about the the noise ordinances and the enforcement of noise noise ordinances regarding this situation?
What can we tell you about enforcing it? I mean, we we enforce our ordinance. I mean, if you have a a complaint, you can call the township and we can take, I mean, we have actually reached out to Penny Packer and spoken to them about this. They did, and I think I emailed with you back and forth a little bit.
Yes.
And they welcomed any resident to also reach out to them because they're willing to work with the residents in the surrounding area. They don't want to be a nuisance. So the first step would be to get everybody happy in in the area. And if it's them putting up some more sound barriers where I think they had talked about Tara, I think they've mentioned something to you about some trees. I don't know how to do it, but.
Well. Yeah. Well, the the trees don't really do anything to mitigate any sound. It's a proximity thing.
Yeah.
Their courts are only eighty feet from the
I'm sorry, what did you say, eight?
They're about eighty feet from the property line. I have a, can I approach?
Yeah, sure. Okay. Yeah, okay. All right.
And it's so it's too close in proximity to have to have the courts there with that activity. Tennis, fine. The pool, fine. You know, we have tolerated. You know, background noise from that without complaint.
Yeah.
But this is just something different altogether.
Okay, well, we're
And and if we're going to talk about solutions, you know, I I would like to 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 talk about solutions. But the proximity thing, they have a large property. They perhaps they could put courts somewhere else on the north side of the property where there wouldn't be houses in close proximity.
Mr. Agito, have you personally reached out to Penny Packer at all? I mean, we're we're happy to reach out on your behalf. But I was just wondering if you had already reached out just for our information.
I have not. Some of my neighbors have, but the results were not substantial.
Okay, well, we'll reach out to them again and try and find a resolution for this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Lynn May. Lynn May. And after Lynn, we have Chris Engel, Jim May and Eric Rowe.
Good evening. I'm Lynn May. I'm a sixty plus year resident of Chester County, thirty-two years in the Downingtown area. I'm here to show support for the Lionville Save the Lionville Station Farm and to let you know that I am vehemently opposed to this plan proposal. I understand it's a sketch plan. But the applicant developer Audubon Development is looking to obtain permission to build two thousand eight hundred and fifty percent larger, like our friend said, than the existing current ordinance allows. I just hope you all plan to enforce the existing ordinances for this property. I realize this may not be the time to discuss per your website. However, I feel it is necessary and and extremely important to make you, our board of supervisors, aware that the bucolic area we are currently privileged to live in and enjoy here in Euclid Township will not exist. It will be no more if this project proceeds as the developer plans. I don't feel this is an area for a commercial project of this magnitude. It's a neighborhood community with families, wildlife, some semblance of serenity and certainly beauty. I implore you, please do not allow or permit any of these variances to the best of your ability. We as a community are trusting in you, our elected officials, to represent the residents of Euclid Township and Chester County on our behalf. I'm thinking perhaps we could plant some native plants there, maybe some milkweed and become naturalists. Better luck.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris Engel.
I'm Chris Engel. Good to see you again. We've been in the community since two thousand and fifteen. But we've been a resident of this area since nineteen ninety-eight. We've been told many times how Lionville Station Farm should be considered very different from the Happy Days Farm plot, right? Um, we've also been told as well how Audubon has been good to work with and that they are trusted local developer. But it seems clear at this point, given the fact that Audubon is selling the Happy Days Farm to another developer, that it seems like they never intended to develop Happy Days Farm but to make a quick buck once the proposal breezes through the conditional use process. So while Audubon is still local, I humbly submit that Audubon should not be considered trusted by this body. It is clear that they have no stake in what happens to this community and that their motivations are solely making money. And I don't begrudge that, but that's what they're doing. So you as a board, as well as your predecessors, have passed ordinances that represent the interests of our community. You just did it again. You did it again tonight. And I thank you. And these ordinances could mean something. So I ask that you thoughtfully hold firm to every one of those ordinances which serve the needs of our community as this developer has no interest in serving these needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, Chair, I'm not a resident of this township, so I don't know.
Jim May. Wait. So next up was Jim May. Sorry, then you're next.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah. I'm assuming you're nearby.
Hi, my name is Jim May and I'm a thirty year resident of Euclid Township. And I was I was touched today when we were listening to Tony talk about some of the things that she's done and some of the people have done in the township to build Euclid up over the years. I've heard over some of the past meetings of some of the people that that aren't with us here today that have dedicated their lives to that. And the point that I really wanted to make today is it's been said that this is this is a neighborhood community. I think we've we've done a good job in growing, but I think that we're about to put everything that we hold dear in jeopardy. The the upside for the for the township is you're going to get some revenue that you probably wouldn't have gotten. The downside, the downside, I think, is extraordinary. The noise ordinance doesn't allow my noise to carry into your home. If we think for a minute that the truck noise from all these distribution properties is not going to carry to other people's properties, I think we're kidding ourselves. The traffic patterns I will compare to a similar site that Consumer Report just recently did. And I'll scale it to meet our size. We would have a hundred and fifty trucks on the average per hour during the weekday with three hundred and fifty trucks per hour on the weekday at peak time. How in God's name are we going to manage those logistics in Little Euclid Township? It's going to be overwhelming. I heard the police earlier today talk about weighing, I think it was fourteen hundred vehicles. We're going to have more than that on a regular basis during the day. I think the threat to the water table is going to be significant. The EPA data shows that spilling one gallon of oil can contaminate a million gallons of water. Spilling one gallon of diesel fuel or gasoline can contaminate seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water. Keep in mind, every truck that comes through here would be carrying between three to four hundred gallons of fuel with fifteen to twenty gallons of oil. And there will absolutely, we there will be spills. We know that's something that's not going to be able to be avoided. And I think what we run into here is that we're going to be exposing everybody in that area who's on a well that shares that aquifer to severe health risks. And I'm not talking about hay fever, runny noses and watering eyes. I'm talking about heart damage and system failures and cancer. And it doesn't happen the day it happens, but it will happen afterwards. I think Downingtown School District, they made it was a very good deal for them. They made extraordinary amount of money with this. And they're going to be able to wash their hands and walk away. And they're going to leave it up to you and all the residents to manage the logistics. And we're counting on you to stick up for us on this event.
Eric Rowe.
I'm Eric Rowe. I live at eighteen eighty-eight Boulder Drive Downingtown. Members of this board, I stand here in firm opposition to replacing Lionville Station Farm with any giant warehouses. And I I stand here to ask you to please consider the significance of this decision beyond the geographic borders of Euclid Township. Just within the last year, we had a great victory in West Town Township with preserving Prebule Farm. And we sent a message to developers who would choose to replace our preserved land. And, you know, with sprawling housing complexes or giant warehouses, we sent a strong message to them a year ago. And that could all be lost with the wrong decision here. So I ask you to please send the right message to those who would fundamentally change the character of our community. Tell them that our our farmlands, our wetlands and our forest lands are not for sale in Chester County. Thank you very much.
Uh, next up, we have Julie Hetzel and then Donna Russell and then Don Harding. So Julie Hetzel?
Hi, Julie Hetzel, a thirty year resident of Euclid Township, also the GM of the Hampton Inn. So I just wanted to make a comment about that and just that, you know, I know you guys passed the ordinance and we will do everything we can to to uphold it and certainly comply. And I just asked, you know, as things are sorted out, you know, and we figure out exactly what it means that we give each other the benefit of the doubt, that we all want to do the best for all of our customers and the residents. So thank you for your help in that.
Yeah, thank you. Absolutely.
Supervisors, Baumann, Miller and Obensky. My name's Donna Rissell and I live at five oh seven William Salas Berry Drive in Euclid Township, myself and my husband. And we are pretty much forever residents of Euclid Township. I was born and raised in this area. Um, we are reiterating our disapproval of the conditional use of the Lionville Station Farm parcel that needs to be approved, what I understand by you, the supervisors, by June thirtieth. If the information I received is correct, building height, the parking spaces and building size are all in excess of what is stated in the Euclid Township Code of Ordinances. The current sketch plan is, as other people have stated, is two thousand eight hundred and fifty percent larger than the standing ordinance allows. Our hope is that you will not grant this conditional use that will ultimately cause devastation to our otherwise beautiful community. I realize that it is up to the Downingtown Area School District Board of Directors to reconsider their decision to sell this to the developer if the mentioned milestone is not met. However, we people, all the people here and many of those who are not here and present can't emphasize enough our desire to stop the progression of this warehouse now at its earliest stages. I know you only have a sketch plan, but we're trying to make this or prevent this from going further. Please listen to your constituents, to the people who elected you. I know you care. I can tell. So please act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
And hot, just to follow, yeah, want to explain.
Sure, there's just just to clarify, there's there's no application pending apparently. So there's no decision for the board to make. There's no deadline. There's there's nothing in front of them related to Lionville Station Road. I don't I don't know what that is.
There 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 might be something with the school board, with their agreement with the school board, and that has nothing to do, like, it doesn't put any obligation on us. So if we don't have a plan in front of us, we can't vote on it. Um, we can't put it through the planning commission. So that's all on between the school board and the developer. So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Don Harding. And after Don, there'll be Dave Fortrell Fortell and Barbara Federro. Sorry about the names, guys.
Hi, I'm Madam Chair Baumann and Supervisor Miller and Supervisor Obensky. My name is Don Harding. I live at three oh one Brookwood Drive in Downingtown. And we've lived here since two thousand and ten. And I come here tonight in some ways on a much smaller issue because it's very localized. But also it's related to the larger issue of beauty. And I heard a fellow resident talk about the bucolic nature of our community. So I this has to do with that, but it's on a much smaller base issue. And that is uh, my main question for the the board is what is the township's long term vision or plan for restoring and preserving the scenic beauty uh, along the portion of Peck Road that I'm going to show you with a locator map? Uh, and what can Brookwood area residents do to help realize that vision or plan for scenic beauty? Now, why do I use that term scenic beauty? Can I display this? Do we have an overhead?
Yeah, we don't. We don't know. We we can't put it up there, but I can take that. I actually remember this from, I did look at this from your email, but yeah. The Peck Road is designated as a scenic road.
And you don't doubt it. People in the audience, this section of Peck Road that we're talking about is right near the Brookwood subdivision between Brookwood Drive and Dowan Forge. And it has been designated in the township's comprehensive plan as a scenic road with intrusions. And what I'd like to do is enter into the record tonight uh, half a dozen photos that I took uh, actually, two years ago of debris, fallen logs, fallen trees, uh, trees cut off at twenty feet up and just left to rot and to die. Uh, a drainage hose and other just unsightly uh, problems along the road that I can't imagine are part of anyone's plan for the long term plan for that for that scenic byway. And I'm not here just by myself, but I do represent a couple of other people who have mentioned this to me as a problem. One of them is David Penfield, who lives at four fifty-seven Brook Brookwood, who sent me a text tonight saying he agrees. This is a problem there as he calls it encroachment of debris upon the roadway, causing an unsightly situation. And he thinks that it's not a good trend to get started and we need to do something to address it. Lest I be too negative, we live in a really beautiful community and I want to thank the supervisors for all the work you've done uh, to preserve our natural beauty, the Euclid Trail, the many wonderful parks, uh, our comprehensive plan. We're very blessed to have that. And I would just ask that to do what you can do to address this issue along this section of Peck Road. And I think I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll definitely take a look at it. Dave Fortell. Oh, wait. Mr. Harding, did you have some pictures you wanted to give us? I can't read that right now. You can just hand them to me. Thank you. Thank you.
The the Euclid Township Comprehensive Plan dated May twenty twenty and on table four or five has a proposal to connect Hayward Drive. and on table four or five, has a proposal to connect Haywood Drive, where the skating rink is, to Lionville Station Road. The responsibility of this is indicated to fall on the developer. I'm curious if the township or its officials had discussions with Audubon about warehouses on Lionville Station Farm as early as May twenty twenty.
No.
You have not? Good, okay. Uh, there are at least seven point five million dollars in road improvements suggested to support the Megaliths, Megaliths that few, if anybody wants in this community. Who's expected to pay for these improvements?
Uh, this is a public comment period?
Can't ask questions?
You can ask, not, may not get answers.
Okay, so there's no answer to that question?
Well, let me just, I mean, this is an opportunity for the public to express comment. We're actually hearing, spending a lot of time expressing comments about an application, a, a potential future application that's not even pending, but that's people's right to come and talk about something that's not
Written copy, uh, Township Comprehensive Plan. Kind of referring to, I'm not referring to a hypothetical.
I assume you're referring to Lionville Station. For that, I was referring to Lionville Station.
No, I'm referring to your Township Comprehensive Plan that we
You're not here on Lionville Station Road? The hat you're wearing doesn't indicate what you're here for.
I'm here to discuss that as well.
Get your question, please.
Absolutely. There are seven and a half million dollars worth of improvements suggested to support Happy Days Farm, which is approved, as you know, as well as Lionville Station Road, I suspect.
Happy Days Farm isn't.
I'm asking who's expected to pay for these improvements?
Typically, in general, the developer of any property for whatever plan would be responsible for the improvements.
Right.
With some exceptions.
And, and your plan, it says the township is, Euclid is, is, uh,
Which plan are you referring to?
Yeah, I mean, there's something, actually with some exceptions, so I mean, there's
One Township Comprehensive Plan dated May twenty twenty. In front of
Yeah, but the responsibility is to the developer, it says right there. Are you talking, are you referring to section two B?
No, I'm referring to the other.
Which one?
And this is why we don't get into a question.
We have a list of like fifteen here. I mean, if you could point to the which one we're talking about.
I'll, I'll, I'll email you that, but I assure you that there are seven and a half million dollars worth of improvements with respect to these two developments. And I'm curious, who will pay for that?
That's a comprehensive, you're not, that's not a land development plan, it's a comprehensive plan.
Right.
So that's not
That's not put, put out by Euclid Township?
No, they, you know what a comprehensive plan is, right?
Right, I'm reading it.
Yeah, right. So it's not the land development plan, it's not a subdivision plan, it's not a land development agreement, it's not an escrow agreement. What is it?
Yeah, what is it?
What is a land, what is a comprehensive plan? It's a vision, it's a vision document.
Okay, so I'll, I'll rephrase my question. Who is gonna pay for this vision of seven and a half million dollars improvements?
It's not a, it's not a proposal.
This is part of why we don't get it.
Not answered, thank you. Okay.
Yes, question because it's very vague and I'm not sure what seven and a half million dollars you're referring to.
I'll, I'll, I'll
If you could send it in an email, that would be amazing. Yeah. We wanna answer your question, we just, it's a little bit hard at this juncture because we don't really have
If, if you're referring to a land development plan or, uh, a land development agreement, I, I understand that, I, I understand, but I'm
Email it.
I, I understand, I understand you're referring to a comprehensive plan. I'm saying, and that's what I'm trying to explain, a comprehensive plan is not an action document, right? It's a vision doc.
So, so, and let me, let me put it this way, the, the, the comprehensive plan is sitting there saying, like, there's these undeveloped product, properties that were, that are in our township. We don't know who's gonna come into these properties. We don't have, uh, we don't know the developer, but even the range of uses that might be in that, these are the types of things that we would expect the developer would have to do to improve the plan. Now, when a developer actually comes in with an actual plan, he might, or they might have a different requirement for their use. So what's on here is more of like, uh, this is what we think will happen, giving all the possibilities that are out there. And when the developer comes in and says, this is specifically what we wanna do. If you're asking who's gonna pay with and there's some exceptions, I'm sure, but it's gonna be the developer who does the improvements to the land and surrounding areas for that development. But it might not be exactly what's written in the comprehensive plan based on the uses there. Is that, is that helpful?
A little bit.
Okay, I'll email the specifics.
Okay, yeah, thank you, that would help.
Yeah, thank you. And after Barbara, Michael Taylor, who's still here, and Tommy Ippolito. Barbara Federoff.
Hi. Hi. My name is Barbara Federoff. I live on Deep Willa Drive in Exton, which is located in Eagleview. We had lived there for nine years. From a bird's eye view, our home is quite close to the turnpike. I can hear the tractor trailers downshifting at night when our windows are open. What is it gonna sound like when we have mega warehouses get put in? I parked at a hotel parking lot located at the intersection of Route one, one hundred and Route one thirteen located in Exton today for one hour from ten twenty until eleven twenty AM. The reasoning for parking was to count the tractor trailers and the box trucks that went through the intersection in an hour's time. The following are my findings. Route one hundred coming from Exton direction, seventy-five tractor trailers, twenty-three box trucks. This is a total of ninety-eight trucks in one hour from that direction or one point six three every minute. At one hundred south coming from PA Turnpike, forty tractor trailers and seventeen box trucks. That is a total of fifty-seven trucks in one hour. So that is about one every minute. Route one thirteen traveling from Lionville, twenty-four tractor trailers, fourteen box trucks with a total of thirty-eight trucks. One hundred, Route one thirteen traveling from Chester Springs, seventeen trailer, tractor trailers and eight box trucks. In conclusion, there were two hundred and eighteen trucks that went through that intersection in one hour or three point six three trucks per minute. What total would be like when the warehouses go in? I would say at least four times that number, which could be eight hundred and seventy-two trucks per hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael Taylor, again, Creekside Drive in Downingtown. Uh, I initially put my name on the list because I was gonna speak about the why, but I had that opportunity already, but I wanna bring up another question. It's gonna, it's gonna be more rhetorical question. Uh, the people here on Lionville Station and Farm have been getting a quick education on the land use process. And you've said many times that there is no plan in front of you. When a Tell me when I'm wrong here. When a plan is filed, it will be going in front of the planning commission, correct?
It'll come here first.
It'll come here and then, then, then it goes to the planning.
Correct.
So there is no way possible that a conditional use, uh, order can be provided before July.
So that's, so let's, so now we're, we're confusing two different things. So the answer is yes, there's no way either a land development or a conditional use will happen. What was the date?
July first.
Correct.
That's all I want.
But there is, conditional use is one thing, land development is another thing. They both have to get approved by this.
Fair, fair enough. I'm, I was speaking a little
I just, I, I just wanted to, because, and then, because I'm also hearing about variances and that goes to the zoning hearing board, which is even another approval process that would take place. So there's, and, and we went, I think about four months ago, I spent some time going through the whole, the whole thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But there's no way the conditional use can be done by July first.
There's no applica-, there's not even an application pending.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
It's not on Lionville Station Road. On Lionville Station Road, right.
Hello, my name's Tom Ippolito. I'm at six oh four Byers Road. I live at the intersection of Byers and Lionville Station in my father-in-law's old Quinn Hills Farmhouse. I have a very close connection to what goes on Lionville Station Road. I'm not gonna mention any names, but there's a reason why. Um, I just wanted to ask, I asked it at the school board and there is zero help. You guys are phenomenal compared to them. But I wanna ask you guys, do any of you live within a mile of the school district or of the, of Lionville Station Farm? Do any of you guys live within a mile?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we live within a mile of it?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't
I'm not gonna hold your addresses though. I did it at the school district.
All of Euclid Township is right around the corner, but I live in Birchwood, so.
Okay, so I live, you know, obviously within sort of mile of it. Speaking for people who are here, but if you live there, would you want this in your backyard? I mean, you have to answer this question. So the other thing is, yes. On our location, which there's another person on our driveway and there's also Aqua on our driveway. And, you know, we're really close. You grab my driveway, make a right, it's Upper Euclid. Looking left is West Pikeville. Go straight, it's, or Euclid. All the water from Lionville Station Road comes down my driveway. And people know where I live at and they cross my road when it's raining, it's this deep. And Aqua has to cross that. So I'm sure you're gonna get Aqua coming in to talk about this as well. The runoff that's gonna increase. Sometimes we can't even get through it. Um, one thing I wanna mention is this, within the past like three months, um, I've probably seen three to four accidents of people coming down Lionville Station Road, making a right.
Onto
And I usually hear it from my garages or my house. So I'll come down on my gator and help them out and I mean, I helped Kurt last week, a guy with a kid ran off the road right at the end of the station road and then four or five times near Fung's house, run off the road. I mean, that's just gonna increase. And my question is, is because, you know, this is Euclid Township, but how, how do you guys plan on making sure that the roads in West Pikeville, which is the back way up to this farm are, are safe and can handle these roads? Firsthand, I can tell you right now, it's, it's already a mob scene. And I know you've heard this before. I work at construction management, so I know you guys only have a sketch plan and I mentioned this on the website that these kinds of companies do their due diligence, they get it passed and then they hand it off and they wipe their hands of it. So my question is, is like the, I mean, West Pikeville, I know you guys live in Euclid Township, but I think West Pikeville should have some say in this too as well, because the, the backside of it is, is the roads there cannot handle this.
So I
Go ahead, wanna answer one? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, so what I tell you, you're in, you're West Pikeville, you said?
Yeah.
Okay. And it doesn't matter. All represented by the West Pikeville and West Pikeville Board. And they do have things they can do to either intervene in this, uh, uh, action or you know, or other, or they should be talking to the developer. I, what I'm saying is that for those of you who aren't Euclid, you should also be talking to your board. You have representatives who represent you and who should be, should be, have your interests in mind and they can do stuff on their own and they, and not that I wanna invite a whole bunch of people into our Not application, but they can be, just like with the YMCA, we had residents who were, who were, you know, who were, um, what is it? Parties to the, to the hearing, you know, that can happen. So, so I would encourage you to, to also be talking to your board who represents you and the people in Upper Euclid should be talking to the Upper Euclid Board who represents you and asking them what are they're planning to do if this comes through.
Yeah, we did, I did mention it to them. I think they are planning on at least reaching out, but I just wanted to get my firsthand experience of being so close to it and as, as probably other people here too, so.
Because we can't make, I mean, in the end, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we can't make anyone do anything on another township's property.
Sure.
But they are aware that, I mean, we're, we're aware that the, the surrounding municipalities are aware and engaged.
Okay, thanks.
Next up, we have Eric Toughner, then Mike Brea and then Jet Spicer.
Good evening, I'm Eric Toughner. I live on eight thirteen Hawthorne Street in the Wellshares Community. I'm here in support of my fellow neighbor Frank Pighito about the, uh, noise issues with the Penny Packer pickleball playing. Uh, my, uh, property is closest to the pickleball courts at the Penny Popper Property more than, closer than anyone in the Well, in the Wellshares neighborhood. Actually, the courts, I think, have been reconstructed and improved. Um, and I'll say the noise is deafening, um, from si- as early as six fifteen AM in the morning to after eight PM. There's been recorded play. Um, so, uh, we're definitely in support of some of the ideas that Frank had. Um, similar to what the board talked about with the Y considerations and, and the recommendations about certain noise barriers and and, and I'm, I'm motioning, you know, uh, relocation of the courts, ideally that would be best. But we, we're just asking for the same consideration and same recommendations that you awarded residents around the Lionville Y uh, for the residents on the Wellshares Community as well. Um, we, we do have a right to enjoy our, our livelihood in our own homes and the noise level is definitely an impact to that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, thank you. My name is Mike Brea. I live at three six four Harshaw Drive with a great many people who are also sitting here. We're right next to, or right next to the hard, the farms we're talking about. I live there with my wife and three ten-year-olds, triplets who I moved here eight years ago to enjoy the wonderful community this year, the farmland, the, the mix of nature with with community and with everything, good schools, good community, good board members, good people that are taking care of us. So I am here to, like, as you would expect, to vehemently oppose this monstrosity of a development project that is, that we're all talking about. So as we've talked about, noise is what I'm gonna talk about a little bit. That's gonna focus on that. Stay focused on it. The project has raised significant concerns with the entire community about the impact of this noise pollution, as you've heard about. Toby brought up the, the, uh, the ordinance, which is very noteworthy. Twenty-four seven op-, twenty-four seven operation of the warehouses, along with the, repeated, three hundred and forty-eight docks. Three hundred and ninety-four tractor trailers, parking spots and other heavy equipment involved in the project will obviously generate a massive amount of noise, as we've talked about. Noise is a problem. I want to emphasize the project's not done yet. You guys still can do quite a bit. I know it's not there yet and you've talked about it, but there's still whatever you can do. That's what we wanna talk to you about. And we're urging you to, uh, proceed to stop as, as best you can. The, uh, several concerns I have noted here related to noise pollution. First, constant noise generated by the project could lead and would lead to sleep disturbance for the residents, which is scientifically shown to have potentially significantly, significant health consequences, right? It's not just about losing sleep and having a shitty day next to them, pardon me, having a bad day. It, it really is a health consequence problem. Over increased risk of cardiovascular disease, science shows, good, shows that. Obesity, depression. Secondly, the noise pollution from the project would almost certainly impact property values in the area, having significant negative financial impact on our homeowners, including myself. Thirdly, the noise pollution could very well have a negative, negative impact on the environment, destruct, destructing our natural habitats, which are part of why I moved my family here, which they enjoy, as do my neighbors' families. Of the habitats of the animals in the area causing them to flee or improperly adapt, likely causing other environmental issues. Research shows noise pollution can have a significant impact, quite plainly, but importantly on the quality of life for area residents. The constant noise generated by the project will be a major source of stress and frustration. Which none of us want. Making it difficult or impossible, impossible for us residents to enjoy our homes and community. Moreover, there is a significant risk of noise-induced hearing loss due to proposed, the pro- proposed project exposure to this high levels of noise over extended periods of time can lead to permanent hearing damage. A problem, worse, which can impact one's quality of life significantly. The construction, construction projects sheer size combined with the proximity to the PA Turnpike exit and the traffic that's going to be increased on that area could expose nearby residents to this, uh, and the risk of this, uh, this, uh, noise, their hearing problem. So inclusion is crucial. You as our elected officials, that you hear what we're saying, and I know you're hearing it over and over, but you can do anything you can do. We urge you, we urge you, we demand of you, really as, as the board, not that we can make demands, but really sit here asking to take any action you possibly can, when and if this does come up. And I do thank you for what you've done and what you've expressed to us here in terms of what the process really is.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeff Spicer. It looks like Jeff.
Sorry.
And I'm not that cool. It's just late. Um, I live at sixty-five Fairfield Lane in Chester Springs. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I just wanna throw my voice on the pile. I can't possibly compete with all the wonderful information people have already shared. Um, but I will say that, um, I hope you do enforce the ordinances that you all have against any substantial development of the Lionville Station, uh, property. Uh, I've been a resident of this area for thirty years and it's, uh, Chester Springs for a decade. And we've worked out of here and I'll just, you know, the very simple anecdote. The thing when we were being here in Chester Springs, we had friends come visit us from the west coast in a more populated area and the first thing In a more populated area and the first thing they did was just stand around. Over the view we had and we didn't really understand. And they said, no, you don't understand. You guys live in the forest. And that never left me. So I was just running out every day and I would look, we live in a site of the forest. Through the side of the trees or the concrete warehouses. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? This is the open public comment period. Just come on up and.
Hi, I'm Adrian Myers. I'm on Byers Road and I'm not, don't have my garb on, but I am here for Lionville Station. And the, the one thing that I am concerned about is that I do hear repeatedly that there's nothing we can do. There's nothing that's being done. It's just conditional or it's this or it's that and nothing can be done, nothing can be done. But to juxtapose that with what happened with Happy Days where so much happened during COVID and. The response that I had heard was, well, there's really not a responsibility for us to advertise what's happening. Um, it's up to you as residents to make yourself aware of what's going on. So I feel a little nervous. That I hear a lot about everything is, you know, it's just this, um, uh. Provisional type plan. It's not really anything yet, but at some point it, it will or maybe something. And I don't have my facts, but I thought I heard last month, somebody was received a ten-year extension. Um, for some compliance to something. And I guess the, the thing that concerns me is. What is going to happen between maybe this meeting and the next meeting where it said, oh, you missed that. We did have a meeting. This did happen and that's what concerns me. I mean, you know, you keep hearing the same thing over and over again.
Ms. Myers, can I just, it's just, just to let you know. So nothing happens between meetings, like everything happens in public meetings. We are committed to. Keeping the public informed on this topic. So, um, and we have. I mean, we have legal requirements to advertise everything from. The hundreds of years ago. I mean, that's been a rule. Uh, so everything is advertised. Um, I do encourage everybody, if you don't already, sign up for text alerts, follow us on Facebook. We post the agendas. Um, so nothing's going to happen that you're not aware of if you're paying attention to.
All right.
Whatever's going on.
All right. That's all I was worried about.
Okay.
Because I hear a lot of like, don't worry. I mean, nothing, there's nothing to do yet, but I'm worried that. Something will happen and.
I promise you it won't.
What's that?
I promise you it won't.
Okay, all right. I'm going to hold you.
I, and I very respectfully, uh, disagree. I, the, the Happy Days Farm was publicized as much as we could publicize it. I mean. I, I understand that it, people didn't get, get wind of it and then, and I understand that, but. We use the same mechanisms for Happy Days Farm that we did for Lionville Station Road and you're all here. So, uh, you know, I, I can only say, I can only listen, listen, I mean, what else did, I, I would challenge you. What, what did we not do then that we did now? Well, no, but my point is, we did the same thing to tell you all to be here then.
It wasn't.
I, I don't, I don't want to get into big, and I, and I, yeah, let me, let, first of all.
Let me just use the gavel because it's fun.
Yeah, so let, and I understand, I understand the fear of the unknown. I do. And it's, it's fair, it's legitimate. It's, you know, it's, you know, some of the advertisement things are arcane.
Right.
You know, it's, uh. It, you know, and I, I will agree with, with Supervisor Miller in the, in fact, Happy Days Farm, really, I know there's a narrative that it was over COVID and no one knew. It was actually. Started before COVID. There were, I don't know, something like twenty different hearings here. I remember a number of them being in person, which obviously couldn't have happened if it was. During COVID, uh, there was conditional use. There was land development. There was all sorts of things, but. That doesn't change the fact that I do understand that people have a fear of the unknown and I, I. Will tell you that given the amount of engagement that is currently, that the community currently has with regard to Lionville Station Road, I would be. Frankly shocked if as soon as an application, probably before the board knows, I expect you guys. First of all.
And I want to say, you know, when we came on the board.
Talk about leaps and bounds we've made to. Transparency.
And down when came on the board and I, we won our election. One of the things we did was, was said, listen, we need to be more transparent. I can tell you that. The way we get information out now is like yours better, in my opinion, to six years ago. And. There would not have been any social media contact. There would not, there would have been one, one notification you would have gotten four hours before the meeting, the agenda would put out. No one outside of Euclid was allowed to speak. We are allowed, you know, we're not required to allow everyone outside of the township to, but we think it's important. It's going to impact you. We're, we're worried about. Our neighbors as, as, and our residents and we, you know, we're not just doing it because we want, we want to look good. It's because it's, it's important. We're trying to be as transparent as possible. We're trying to explain the process. It's very opaque, the process itself. And I understand it's, we confusing, um, and you know, sometimes we're in it so much that we. Forget what, you know, we'll say something and, you know, it's like, oh, it makes sense to us because we've gone through it. And so I apologize for that. Um, but we, we really are trying to make it as accessible as possible. And honestly, you guys would murder us if we tried to sneak this through on it. So, I mean, so like realistically, we're, we're not, we're not making, no, it's, we wouldn't even try that, but I mean, it wouldn't work anyway. You guys are, are here and you're going to see it and we, we want you to. So.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh.
God four oh one oh two Crimson Place.
Can you spell, spell your last name, Pauline?
D O R L E.
See.
You sent me a nice email back. Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to comment on the June thirtieth date. I did write a letter to the president of our school board, Leanne Wisdom. Uh, with a copy, I'm in region two to, to that director. The, the amendment to the agreement of sale with Audubon. Says that they have to have their conditional use allowances issued by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. That's the end of this month. You've already said they can't because there's no formal plan here. Let's wonder. Okay, so my request to the school board was, consider them in default to this agreement and move on. And I would recommend anybody who has any concern over that. The school board, if you go to that website, you get the emails, you get the addresses, send them a similar letter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett, Brett Barnello, uh, Euclid Township. So, um. First, I appreciate the open dialogue because I think you have a group of people here that don't want just public comment, but some dialogue. Of what's going on and candidly, I think, feel a little bit caught between a school, school board and publicly owned land. And the township and then navigating the process, which is quite complicated. Um. I'm going to, I'm going to look beyond the, the, uh, proposed plan that isn't even in front of you. And that if, if, if in fact this does get into default, we wind back up with publicly owned land by the district. In a zoned PIC, I think, um, um, area and zoning. And I'd ask that the, this board, and I work with the district. To find an admirable, uh, use for this land. I know there's a long history back to two thousand and six, several, several. Uh, false starts with this land, but somehow over those decade. For various reasons, we have, we're wound up here where we are right now. So. There's got to be a better way that the Euclid Township Board and the district can come together to serve and meet the needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes.
I'm Leslie Dwyer in Euclid Township, Jennifer Drive. And, uh, the, what I'm going to say is not my idea. I saw someone else posted and I thought it was valid. Um, someone mentioned that. Fifty years ago when we did zoning for warehouses, there were no such thing as the mega warehouses that we have now. So maybe that's something that we should consider when approving these things that. The intent fifty years ago is different than what is being requested at this time.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Anyone else want to speak?
Kate Carpenter. I live on Devon Drive. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, to the township employees. For all the work you do, for all the time and energy and effort that goes into all of these meetings and everything that you all do for the township. It is greatly appreciated. And I know sometimes things get tense, but I hope that comes across. We really appreciate everything that everybody's doing. And the opportunity to speak up when we feel like, you know, we need to. No, it's fine. Thanks.
Are there any other comments? Going once, going twice. No, just kidding. Um, all right, then I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Evening, everyone. Drive carefully.